Morning Judge.
I knew you knew.
Good. I know you brought your staff just kind of scatter out. We're going to run through.
You want to let them know?
Glenn, we're going to run through our information here and then we're going to do the presentation after that because I know we've got a lot of staff that needs to get back to work. So, let's jump right into it. Everyone, welcome to the August 6th Pre-Planning Meeting for the Mobile County Commission. Do we have any speakers with us today?
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a little reminder, Commissioner Call, you control this microphone up here. Please, thank you.
I just did. I'm the man in control.
Yes, sir. We have two speakers that are going to discuss the same item. We have Mr. Robert Miller and Mr. William F. Miller. They're going to discuss item 6E on the agenda.
Robert Miller and what's the other one?
William Miller.
Okay, William, okay. Robert, if you'd like to, in its agenda, what's the number of the?
6E.
6E.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I have, we have, we've supplied a few copies of the, of some, of the material that I'll be referencing this morning. We're here to speak about the proposed subdivision Audubon Point on Dog River. We don't dispute the validity of the subdivision that Mr. Twilley wants to do. He owns the property and it's his right to subdivide in accordance with the county's subdivision regulations that he sees fit. Our issue lies with the fact that we don't believe the proposed travelway upgrades meet requirements of the county subdivision regulations and the Mobile County Commission Design Guidelines. We understand that this is only a preliminary approval of the subdivision plat pending a review of the proposed roadway construction plans which have yet to be submitted. Based on the existing conditions, the geometry of the lane and the right-of-way, the existing Dog River lane, its right-of-way and the proposed additional number of driveways so close together, we believe the existing private drive, Dog River Lane, should be upgraded to a two-way travelway with cul-de-sac turnaround at the end. We've reviewed the proposed subdivision plat, the roadway improvement letter, and the bond documentation as submitted by Austin Engineering on behalf of Mr. Twilley. It's included in this information. We understand that they're claiming, or that the subdivision engineer claims that the proposed subdivision does not require a two-lane, two-lane drive that due to its ADT of less than 400, its traffic count of less than 400, that a two-way, one-lane drive is sufficient. If a two-lane road will not be mandated, we believe the following, thank you very much. Based on our review of the submittals, county subdivision regulations, the applicable county design guides, and our knowledge of the existing site conditions, we as engineers and adjoining property owner believe that the following items must be addressed in the design of the upgraded travelway. Per Section 4.1 of the county design guides, a 12-foot travelway requires four-foot shoulders minimum. The existing soil conditions do not support shoulder traffic. When vehicles pull off the lane, deep ruts are created. Much of the area, including the proposed subdivision, is composed of soft, silty soil that has a high water table, does not drain, and remains soft and saturated. Additional traffic on a two-way, one-lane drive will only create additional rut, rutting issues if the shoulders are not constructed to support the additional load. Ruts with standing water will further add to existing mosquito, will further add to the existing mosquito problem in the area. We've attached photos documenting that the existing drainage area, that the existing drainage of the area is very poor at best. Per Section 4.3 of the design guides, a two-lane turn-in at the intersection of Dog River Road needs to be included in the design. That was not documented in the proposed roadway upgrades. Per Section 4 of the design guidelines, if a road will have a school bus, garbage truck, or other large, single-unit vehicles, or a vehicle pulling a trailer, boat, utility, et cetera, on a regular basis, additional width of pavement will be necessary to keep off-track until a minimum. Based on a 12-foot road width and the curve radius of the existing right-of-way, at minimum an additional foot should be placed on the inside of the radius providing at minimum a 13-foot wide road. What was proposed was, what was proposed was a 10-foot wide road and the county has said a 12-foot wide road would suffice. Per Chapter 4, Section 4.2 of the subdivision regs, the minimum cul-de-sac right-of-way is 100-foot diameter and the minimum travelway is 80-foot diameter. In the, in the latest proposed plat, there's a 4-foot, 42-foot radius ingress easement shown on, I can't remember which lot it is, but it's at the end of the lane. I don't know that that would allow for the proper right-of-way. Tree proximity to the travelway and long-term maintenance should also be addressed. There are several oak, water oaks and pine trees and one live oak that are within just a few feet of the existing roadway, the existing private drive. Since the existing and future property owners will have to bear the maintenance cost of the private drive, minimum tree proximity should be addressed. We believe the county should provide guidance for minimum road-to-tree setback. With this information, we request that the preliminary subdivision of Audubon Point not be approved without submission and review of the proposed roadway construction plans and specifications, or assurance by the county that the above details will be addressed.
Mr. Miller, I will assure you, our engineering department, of course, they're all sitting down here and I'm going to get them to speak in just a second.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, some of the things you're talking about, we as a county do not address. For example, trees. That's, that's one thing in the county, we don't address setback of trees. That's just one that stands out. So, although I think some of your, some of your points have got some validity, I'll be quite honest with you, I don't think all of them do. We'll find out from our engineer here in just a second.
Sure.
William? I assume, I assume you're, you're dad? I can't see it there very well for these bright lights.
Yeah, yeah. I'm the dad, sorry.
All right, welcome, sir.
Thank you. I also am an engineer and I live on Dog River Lane. So, I have some real concern about the shoulders. And as you'll look in the pictures that we've presented, during the demolition, when Mr. Twilley tore down a house that was on one of the lots, it created severe damage to the shoulders and that's why I'm asking for structural shoulders improvements to be made so that if he's going to put a single-lane road in. I wrote a letter to the county engineer in December requesting that we have either the opportunity to put a two-lane road in or that Mr. Twilley use a construction road through the middle of his property and not damage all the stuff that's there now. I've got a lady at the end of the lane who asked me yesterday why that's not a real consideration and I don't know. She also said she had some concerns about the cul-de-sac and wanted to know what the layout was going to be and I said, "Well, the county engineer would make sure that met what the requirements were." Again, I'm a concerned property owner. The lots that are there now are all one acre plus. He's putting in lots as small as .35 acres and I understand if that's what the county allows, that's what they allow. We live in the county and that's what we have. The only subdivision I ever was involved with was under city regulations, so they're different.
Obviously, yeah, they are a little different than the county, but anything else you want to?
Any questions, like I said, what we're asking for is that the, I don't know if it can be done by this Tuesday when you vote. If you, if they can't get some assurance and understanding of what we've put in, the validity of these documents that came straight out of the county regulations and guidelines, we're not making anything up, so.
Oh, no.
If they can all be addressed by Tuesday and you vote and you approve it, that's, that's one thing. But if it can't be addressed and agreed to, I'd like to see it delayed for a month. Thank you.
All right, sir. Brian, can you, can you give us, I've got a question. Are these lots going to be sold individually, subdivided?
That's what we believe Commissioner, yes.
On a private dirt road?
It's not a dirt road, it's an existing private paved road.
Okay, the entire road?
But the existing paving does not meet the current subdivision regulation, so we are requiring them to upgrade. And the existing property owners that have addressed the commission this morning, they're not satisfied with the minimum criteria that's being proposed. If the commission wanted to request additional criteria such as the stabilization improvement of the shoulders that are mandated, the width of the shoulders mandated in the subdivision regs, that probably would be a good idea. We did not mandate that to the developer, but with the information they provided this morning about the rutting and things of that nature, it sounds like that would probably be a good idea.
Well, if the other Commissioners don't mind, I would at least let it, let's put it off a couple of weeks and give us a chance to look at it and talk about it.
Well, I think Commissioner, if we could just provide preliminary plat approval with the stipulation that we work out the improvements, they're not going to be able to sell the lots until they get final plat approval.
Particularly related to the show, road, road shoulders?
Road shoulders, yes.
And additional upgrades?
I think that probably is a good idea. If you've got the rutting that they have described this morning on those shoulders out there?
The pictures are pretty compelling.
It probably is going to be a good idea to do some improvement, so I think I'll talk with Matthew Barcliff and we'll see if we can get the developer to agree to that.
Okay, so what are you proposing, what are you proposing that we do then?
Well, we will require the engineer representing the developer to submit revised construction plans.
Okay.
That shows improving the shoulders. So that, you know, 12-foot wide, it's really hard to get two vehicles to cross without having to get out on a grass shoulder. So, if they're having the type of rutting problems that they're talking about, it probably would be a good idea to do some improvements to those shoulders such as rocking them or something of that nature.
Okay, so are you proposing that we go ahead and approve this next Monday?
Preliminary plat only, yes.
Is preliminary only?
Correct.
And the next phase, we have to vote on again?
Yes, after the, all the construction improvements are made to the road, at that point in time, they could present a final plat to us, yes.
But it's contingent on revised plans submitted by the applicant's engineer that addresses the shoulder issues and the rutting?
As presented by the adjacent property owners, yes.
Okay.
I think they're probably valid concerns.
Good.
Could I ask one more thing?
Is it?
Yes, sir. Does the county look at the intersection requirement, which requires a two-lane road where the intersection is at Dog River Road? It's under your design guidelines, I think, 4.3. But that's, that's the reason that the narrow road is a problem is because when cars try and come in or big trucks try and get out, they run all over the shoulders. And the requirements from the county are that it be a two-lane intersection.
Probably a good idea also Commissioner, we'll address that.
Why don't we have a, we review it just to make sure that it does meet all the regulations and whatever additional requirements that they would need to be submitted by the applicant?
As submitted, it meets our current criteria.
That meets.
But it does not address the concerns of the property owners out there, so we'll, if you guys would approve the preliminary plat contingent upon approval by the engineering department of the construction plans, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
Fair enough.
As long as they, they're reviewed and approved, like I said, the?
Well, there's, there's another step. They'll have to change the plans and bring them back to us.
Right.
Correct.
And it'll have to be approved again.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll go through the same process, but we're going to, we're asking for several of the changes. I can't tell you everything in here you recommend, but we're asking for several of these changes.
I understand and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, thank you, thank you Brian.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Okay. Dana, you got any more?
Commissioners, there are no other speakers.
All right. Mr. Glenn?
Ready?
We are ready for you, sir.
Okay. Number one, consider approving amendments of the regular meeting of July 13, 2020. Number two, consider approving list of claims. Three, consider approving hold harmless anonymity agreement with the City of Sims relating to the county's maintenance of preemption equipment owned by the City of Sims and located at intersection within the city as required by the county's agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation.
What's preemption equipment?
Commissioner, the equipment that they're installing on the existing signal poles has receptors that can detect the emissions from these emergency vehicles. In other words, emergency vehicles running down the road, they transmit these signals that activates and turns the signal green for them to allow them to respond to emergency situations.
Wow.
I've never heard that.
And Sims wants to install those on poles inside the Department of Transportation state right-of-way, but we have an existing agreement with the state for us to pay for all of the maintenance on those signalized intersection equipment. Therefore, we did not want to move ahead with the agreement with the state before we had a hold harmless ground with the City of Sims for any activities associated with this equipment. That's what this is.
Thank you. Learn something new every day.
First for me. Number four, consider approving appointment of Karen Payne Taylor to serve as the member of the Board of Directors of the Kusla Water District to represent Place One District at Large for a four-year term. Number five, consider approving contract with South Alabama Volunteer Lawyers Program an amount of $7,500 from District One funds for general operational expenses. Number six, consider approving contract with the City of Creola, an amount of $17,659 from District One funds for the renovation of the Creola softball field. Number seven, consider approving amending the Mobile County Compensary time to reflect the change in the tracking of the holiday compensatory time for employees engaged in law enforcement activities to make it consistent with Personnel Board rules.
Can you, can you explain those changes?
I'll have Donna come in because Personnel Board spoke with her.
Okay. I'd be curious what those changes are.
She's, she's out there.
Go ahead, let's, let's move on, we've got a long day here.
Number eight, consider approving change order number one for metro gel lock and door upgrades. The change will decrease the contract by $50,000 and a new contract total will be $628,974. Number nine, consider approving contract with Hagerty Consulting to provide professional services for disaster and pandemic response cost recovery spending pending legal review. Number 10, consider adopting resolution approving holiday schedule for fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
Can we, do you have any objection to holding this over?
Pardon me?
Do you have any objection to holding this over?
No, it's not time-sensitive, I don't suppose. Is this, this, this reflects the state's schedule? I know we always, okay.
You want to look through it before we?
Hmm?
You want us to hold it over?
Yeah, I, I. Okay. We'll hold that one over.
Number 11, consider amending commission conference and meeting schedule as follows. Counsel, conference on August 20, 2020, and schedule combined conference and meeting on August 24, 2020. Number 12, consider accepting sub-grant awards from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Law Enforcement and Traffic Safety Division for community traffic safety program an amount of $181,130 for the period October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021 for the FAST Act NHTSA 402 program. Number 13, consider approving contract with Moawah Band of Choctaw Indians an amount of $1,000 from District 3 funds for their annual powwow event. Number 14, consider approving contract with Time Clock Plus for provision and license for Time Clock and related software and equipment for J.T. Strickland Youth Center for an initial cost of $18,187.83 and an annual cost of $1,0630.08 for hardware maintenance and annual license fee of $3,600 per 100 users, subject to final legal review. Number 15 through 22, Commissioners, these are all lease agreements with the municipalities for elections for the ESNS Model DS200 tabulators and express vote ADA ballot marketing device and sneeze guards. Number 23, consider approving sponsorship with Sims Senior Center an amount of $300 from District 2 funds for its Happy Meal social event. Number 24, consider taking the following action on bid, and Commissioners, on the third bid down, approving to purchase two John Deere, there's a change on that, it should be to purchase one John Deere Z-Track for $9,192 and one pickup truck for $20,360 for a total of $29,552. We'll have that changed for Monday. Number 25, consider approving renewal of domain name, Mobile County Net from GoDaddy, an amount of $40.34 for Engineering and Public Works Department. 26, consider adopting a resolution awarding sole-source contracted data ventures for Laserfish Software Maintenance an amount of $17,100 for the Sheriff's Department. Number 27, consider authorizing advertising for Biz Procurement Card Services. 28, consider awarding county annex fire pump control system replacement to Hiller Systems for their total bid, an amount of $34,006.
Mr. Hod, does that need to be approved today or can it, number 28, or can it wait till Monday?
Was that an emergency?
It seemed to be a life safety issue, but I'll let Tyler Martin chime in on it.
I'm Tyler, if you have a question about number seven?
Donna and Alicia, here.
Glenn, on number 23, the Happy Meal social event, it's taking place next week. If we could go, go ahead, if there's no objection and approve that today, it would get the, get it moving along faster.
What number is that one?
That's number 23.
Number 23.
Okay, so move.
Second.
And Commissioners, while we're waiting on Tyler on number 20, I didn't know that Judge Davis has something he wanted to ask the commission, if it now would be in appropriate time. No, it's not inappropriate, it comes after all of this.
Yeah, we're, we're almost through. We're going to give, we're going to give the judge all the time he needs.
Tyler, number 28, can that wait till Monday? That was my only question to you, sir.
Yes, sir, that can wait till Monday. We've got, we've got some paperwork in progress, so we'll have that ready Monday and all that'll fall into line just fine.
Don't you have some add-ons, administration add-ons?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
First add-on, consider adopting a resolution awarding sole-source contract to NEC Corporation of America in the amount of $49,558.47 for the period of July 15, 2020 through July 14, 2021 for the Sheriff's Office. Add-on number two, consider approving amendment to the infectious disease policy and adoption of the COVID-19 guidelines. Add-on number three, consider approving leasing to the City of Pritchard, an additional two ESNS Model DS200 tabulators and one express voter ballot marking device for additional rental fee of $600 for municipal election on August 25, 2020 and the municipal runoff election on October 6, 2020 if necessary.
Is there a reason we didn't just weave this into the existing item for the City of Pritchard municipal election?
It came in this morning, right before the meeting.
It seems like it ought to be in the same?
No, we're going to put them in, but it came in late, so we had to add it.
Okay.
That we'd added on for your information.
Okay, but it'll just be included in the Pritchard item on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure I fully understood the question regarding our probate judge, Judge Davis. Did you, did he have a, did you have a question regarding something else on the agenda?
No Commissioner, what I don't see on the agenda is a proposal for the commission to consider acquisition of one of the electronic pole pads, proposals that are here today. And I would suggest that that needs to be on your agenda so it can be taken up next week.
Well, can, we haven't even heard the presentations yet. It may be, that, that was why I didn't think it would be on the agenda, if we want to add it after we see the presentations.
I just want to make sure I don't.
I think that's what he's.
I don't know the protocol, I didn't want this to adjourn and it'd be a problem or serial problem with it not being?
There's not a problem with adding it on to the agenda after this?
As long as you get two more to agree on something up here, we're in good shape. All right, Donna, I see you're here, real quickly, number seven, I'd like some explanation on that and then I'd like to come back on, on number two, on the add-on, on the infectious disease policy.
Okay, I'm going to let Alicia talk about the comp time, the change to the comp time policy.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's hard to see from down here, so, go ahead, thank you Alicia.
In previous years, whenever we've had a holiday, the people who work whose off-day falls on the holiday?
Law enforcement.
Which is law enforcement, they would receive compensation for working that day. So, it would be in the, it would be in the form of comp time. So, we would just code it as comp earned and it didn't, just like any other day if they worked over. But what's happened is since we changed our policy to cap it at 240 and 480 and we're enforcing that, now we have people that are earning comp time on a holiday, but they've already hit their limit. So, what we were doing was we were giving them OR, which is overtime regular. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
No, that's good.
But that kicked out with the Personnel Board as an error. So, what they do, like with the police department, is they have a separate bucket and they call it holiday comp, comp earned. So, what we'll do is we'll just create this extra bucket so that when they have a holiday and they, it's their off-day, we'll just give them holiday comp earned and then they'll be able to accrue that.
Has the Sheriff's Office reviewed this? Do they know about the change?
They have and they do.
That, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is in addition to their regular comp time that has a, a ceiling?
Yes, and this will have a ceiling too.
And, excuse me.
Okay.
I mean, what they explained is, regular comp time is, is earned for working overtime.
Right.
This is really not overtime, it's a benefit earned, is the way the Personnel Board explained it to us. So, that is why they want us to track it differently so that it doesn't, one, it won't skew our overtime numbers either.
So, the payout is the same, it's just the tracking that's different?
Yes, yes, the benefit's the same, it's just the way we track it and report it to the Personnel Board.
Okay.
But they wanted us to change our policy to match that, so we, we did.
What's the cap on this one?
$168 hours.
Yes. And they have to use it or lose it. And so, there's a, as you're, in the policy it explains that they have a certain amount of time in which they can use that.
Okay, thank you. Donna, briefly tell us what the changes are in this policy, because I, I know you, you talked to all three of us and got our input. I'm curious, without reading this stimulating manual.
And you said briefly?
Yeah, briefly.
Okay, and John may have to jump in and help me here.
I was thinking of pathing back when you said that.
Adams.
Okay.
Okay, I dropped my, my folder a minute ago and I've got to find everything. What, basically though, what we did is on the infectious disease policy, because the information about the, the leave time seems to keep changing. about the leave time seems to keep changing, well, the, about the quarantine, and then that in turn was forced us to relook at how we pay people, and what time, what do we call it, and that kind of thing, so what we chose to do was just to take the detailed information about the types of leave out of the policy, and replace that with a statement that basically will follow the county policies for leave in accordance with the Personnel Board rules, and they can be superseded by other guidelines from CDC or somewhere else, depending on what's going on, I guess. And so that, that's the main change to the actual policy. But then we created these guidelines, we had, we had, excuse me, we had created guidelines before just to help our supervisors kind of know how to administer the policy, but as the things keep changing, and we get more information, those guidelines kept getting, growing and growing, and became almost like, almost a policy in and of themselves, but we took the language from the, the policy that we had, and we incorporated that into the guidelines, which I think I sent you a copy, and I'm trying to find my copy now, thank you. And it's the, I guess the most important thing to know is, when the CDC changed the guidelines for close contacts, and they're saying that, that someone who is in close contact with a person who is positive, or is, has symptoms, the symptoms of a being positive, that you should be quarantined for fourteen days, whether or not you are experiencing symptoms or test positive, test negative, you should be quarantined for fourteen days, and so what we, and then if they're living with someone who is positive, and they can't separate completely from them, then they would have to quarantine an additional fourteen days after that person that they're living with is, is over it. So we were looking at how employees, or should employees be paid, and what we, after reviewing everything and talking about it, we, our recommendation is that if someone has close contact with an employee at work, if we have an employee at work who has tested positive, and they tell us that they've had close contact with other employees, based on the definition of close contact by the CDC, then we would contact those employees that we're calling the close contacts, and tell, tell them they would need to quarantine, and at that time, we would put them on administrative leave.
Ten days or fourteen days?
It's eighty hours, they would have to quarantine for fourteen days, but they would be paid for up to eighty hours, or for eighty hours, and.
That's on-the-job exposure?
Yes, yes.
And their ability to work at home?
Yes, if they can work at home, thank you, if they can work from home, they will be required to work from home, but if they cannot, then they would go on administrative leave, unless they get tested, and the doctor tells them that they should quarantine, then they would go on the emergency sick leave if it's available still. And then, so that's, that's one scenario. If an employee comes to us and says they have had close contact with someone outside of work, they would also be required to quarantine for the fourteen days, and we're recommending that we would, the first time that happens, that we would pay them the, well, first, if they can work from home, they work from home, same thing, if they get tested and they're advised to quarantine, they would use their emergency sick leave, otherwise, we would put them on administrative leave for, for the eighty hours, but if they come in contact with someone, again, weeks or months later down, outside of work, then they would have to use their own leave to cover any of the time off. So those are the, I think, the significant changes, weren't they?
And that, that's where I had my, my issue with it, when we talked about it, is you're setting it up for a lot of abuse, when you do that, you give, you give them, you give them one, one free eighty-hour, free ride, and you're gonna, you're gonna see a lot of abuse there, I'm sorry.
Well, we, and without it, what you're gonna see is employees who are gonna come to work sick, who are gonna come to work positive, asymptomatic, and not gonna tell anybody, because they feel like they can't afford to be off payroll, and in my judgment, that's certainly not an instance that we want, we want people who are not well, who, even if they are asymptomatic, we want them to be able to, to stay home, and not come here and infect more employees.
Well, it amazes me how, we're going through this pandemic, we've got people struggling to make it through it, government employees aren't missing a lick, I mean, we, we need to get people back to work and encourage them to work, not to encourage them to stay home.
So we want COVID-positive asymptomatic people to come to work?
I did not say that, I'm saying we need to set it up where we have encouraging people to work, not encouraging them not to work.
I think that everyone who is being quarantined is not necessarily COVID-positive, they've maybe come in contact with somebody that's COVID-positive, I think the concern here is that we may reach a point where our productivity basically bottoms out, if you have enough people who are, and I, and I understand, I understand completely what you're saying, that we need to take precaution to make sure that, that we do everything to keep people who potentially may be infected from being in the, in the work environment, but I think we also need to protect the productivity, if, if at all possible, and those who are quarantined, who have maybe come in contact, we need to make sure that those people are being productive if they're working from home, and to encourage that.
And, and I don't disagree with that, I just, I guess I just have a higher opinion of our employees, I think there will be people who will.
That's unfair.
There'll be people who will abuse it, but I think that is the minority, we have people who abuse the existing leave, we have people who abuse the leave that we have now, but they are not the majority of our employees, I don't want to create a policy where our good employees, we have no flexibility with our people who have genuine circumstances, because we created a policy aimed at that minority of people who will abuse, it's the minor, it's not most of our staff who are gonna just, oh, I can get a free, I can say I've had contact, and I'm gonna stay home, it's the, I think it's the minority, not the majority of our staff.
So we don't need to make rules and regulations based on minorities' views?
I don't think we need to make policy based on a group, a small group of offenders, I don't think that you, I think the policy ought to be based on what's best for, for most of our employees. You know, if, what we found, you make a rule, for example, somebody who, whose sick call comes in after eight o'clock, they don't call in sick, we make a flat rule, and we have somebody who never calls in sick, is always there on time, when they call in sick, when we make a rule like that, because of people who abuse it, then we have taken away our flexibility to say, oh, that's Joe Blow, he's never sick, never late, and he doesn't abuse it, that, I just, I, that's just my approach, I don't think you make policy based on the people who are going to offend, I, I just, that's just my, my approach to it.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna, unless you got something else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, do you, do you have any ideas of how we might modify?
Yeah, I, I just, I think that's what sick leave is for, I, I mean, that's what, in, in my, my private business, that's what sick leave is for, if people feel like they're exposed, and they, and they shouldn't come to work, I mean, that's what sick leave is for. Now, how much sick time do we get, does the average employee get per year?
Everybody gets eighty hours.
Eighty hours, so there, you know, I don't, I mean, we're making all these, I realize we're in strange times, and I do, I do want to take care of our employees, don't get me wrong, but, but when you set it up for, set up for abuse, like so many things, based on, as you said, a minority group, it, you're gonna get it, and productivity's gonna drop, and we're gonna have, we're gonna have some, some problems, so I'll leave it at that.
So do we need to change it, we really need to make a decision with this, not today?
Well, you're gonna get a no from me, I don't know how the other commissioners are gonna vote, I mean, that's the bottom line, that's where it's going, so, I'm, I can't tell you to change a thing, as one. But I, personally, I don't care for that clause in there, and I made that very obvious when we met.
Okay. At this point, I think, let's, let's circle around and have a little more conversation about the application of this, I, I'm, as I said, my main concern is, is productivity, if you start quarantining everybody, and this doesn't have anything to do with abuse, but quarantining everybody who's been in contact with somebody who may have tested positive, then you can have whole departments that are basically being quarantined at, at one time, I, I, let's, let's look back at that and, and see how we might, how that impacts the productivity and what we may do, if, if there's other steps that we may take to ensure that, that we can protect people, but at the same time, not so severely impact productivity here.
As proposed, they would only get paid one time, but.
Unless it's an on-the-job exposure?
Right.
Then it would be two, or, or as many as exposed.
Yes, but fortunately, our experience has been, for the most part, when someone has been exposed at work, or when someone has, at work, has tested positive, the people, they, it has been a very small number of people they've been exposed to.
So how many have we had tested positive county-wide out of eighteen hundred employees?
I, I really don't know.
Ten, fifteen?
Maybe, maybe twenty, fifteen to twenty, maybe.
Okay. All right.
And so, and beyond that, with those other exposures, how many, do you have, have any idea how many total have been quarantined through this process?
Probably that many plus. Ten or fifteen that have been exposed to those who were positive, maybe ten to fifteen over the last several months.
Right.
As well as the ten or fifteen, or fifteen to twenty?
Now, the ones who actually tested positive would not have been on administrative leave, they would have been on the emergency sick leave.
Okay, I get that, okay.
Well, I, I think those numbers are certainly manageable, we just don't know what the future holds.
Yeah, and if that person who has had close contact, if they go and get tested, and, and most of the time when they do, they're told to quarantine, they are able to use the emergency sick leave if they haven't already used it, so.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll discuss it some more between now and.
And Monday.
Monday's meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Glenn?
I think it's, I'm through, Brian.
I'm sorry, Brian?
Yes, good morning, commissioners, item number one, recommend approving an agreement for the sale of wetland mitigation credits with Alabama Port Venture for our Glass Road project. Item two, recommend approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Mobile for our Solly Road project, that's one of our rebuild Alabama projects. Item three, recommend approving supplemental agreement number three with Rob Middleton Construction, one of our two thousand and fourteen page go projects. Item four, recommend approving right-of-way agreement to purchase Track Eight on our McDonald Road project. Item five, recommend approving right-of-way agreement to purchase Track Three on our Sweet Town Road project. Item six, approving preliminary plat only of Autobahn Point, that's in Commission District Three, and approving preliminary plat only of Deer Crest Unit Three, that is also in Commission District Three. Item seven, recommend approving preliminary and final plat of Broadway Airport Wakefield Subdivision, that's in Commission District Two, and approving preliminary and final plat of the RE subdivision of Lot Thirty-three, Amelia Lake Phase Two, that's in Commission District Three, and approving preliminary and final plat of Courtney Family Subdivision, that's in Commission District Three, and approving preliminary and final plat of Pine Road Estates, which is also in Commission District Three. Item eight, recommend reassigning a contract for professional engineering services for our Triumph Road project, one of our two thousand and four pay-as-you-go projects, from Speaks and Associates to Thompson Engineering. Item nine, recommend awarding the bid for Project Bohannon Road and Hubert Morris Road to Southern Land Development for their low bid.
Can, can I ask you real quick, why don't we, why don't we switch at eight, from one company to another?
Commissioner, I called and spoke with Speaks and Associates, and we have them just maxed out on some other projects that are much more important, or projects, I, I don't need to be taking their forces off to address this, so we called Thompson, and they said they can jump right on it real quick, and I think that's the desire of the commission.
Thank you.
Item nine, recommend awarding the bid, excuse me, I just read that, item ten, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids on our Booth Town Road, one of our two thousand and sixteen page go projects, and then item eleven, recommend approving supplemental agreement number two with Jose Weaver on one of our two thousand and fourteen page go projects, Hall's Mill, Lee's Lane.
Thank you. We have anything else? You missed, Commissioner Ludgood and I have been, along with John Adams, in work on a project, if you want to explain, or Sarah, I can, but we need, for the commissioners to consider some approval today on a lease between the Mobile County School Board, and we're seeking an application to re, to subdivide some property owned by the school board, so Commissioner Ludgood's project can move forward, the Africatown Heritage House, while I let her be more detailed. Jay, we can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay, we ju, I just found out, in fact, I got a text while we were sitting here, we were, for the Africatown Heritage House, which is CIP project that we're advertising for biz, it's going to be built on property owned by the Mobile County School Board, they approved the lease in their July twenty-seventh meeting, we need to now approve it, so that when we go to the Planning Commission, we have an, the other part of this is that we have an application before the Planning Commission that gives a variance for that piece of property to be, to be used for a museum, and to establish that plat, I, I didn't, I didn't realize that this was something that needed, I thought this could just go through an administrative process, I didn't realize it needed commission action until I got that text a minute ago. So what I am asking is that we go ahead, I think Jay has the lease from the school board, the signed lease from the school board, that we could vote on that, and then vote to authorize the application before the Planning Commission for the variance, for the use of that school board property.
I didn't know, I didn't realize that we were subject to the application for variances being a county entity. Is that new?
It's been a subject, it's been a subject of some debate, and.
It's been applied both ways, you understand? Okay.
We're just trying to get through their process, it's no cost to the county to do what Commissioner Ludgood is asking.
Okay, I just, I just wondered the, why it was necessary, I didn't realize that it was.
It's been discussed amongst the lawyers, but this is a process that we have.
And this makes everybody happy, is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I move approval of the lease with the Mobile County Public School System for, I think it's two-point-eight acres.
That's correct.
Second.
And then I moved that we authorize the Mobile County Commission to apply to the City of Mobile Planning Commission for the various on the use of this parcel, and whatever other processes that we will have to undertake consistent with the City of Mobile Planning.
What is it currently zoned, do you know?
It's zone residential, but it's on the same plot where the Hope Community. It's zone residential, but it's on the same plot where the Hope Community Center is. So it's already, but each time you do something different, apparently, you have to-
Second.
Commissioners, if I may, we received a request yesterday afternoon from the Walmart Distribution Center people requesting authorization to place a semi-trailer on that segment of McDonald Road located north of our cul-de-sac that we recently constructed. It's just on the south side of the right-of-way of Interstate Ten. So I would anticipate sometime today working with legal department to generate a whole harmless for them to execute and provide to us that we could present to you Monday.
What what will they use this trailer for?
They basically place a large sign on the side of this big semi-trailer advertising that they're hiring. They they evidently have a need for a bunch of additional people. So.
And this is in our right-of-way?
It's in our right-of-way. We're not currently using the the right-of-way. It's north of that cul-de-sac that we recently purchased, and we we allowed them to do this two years ago.
Okay.
Uh, but we need to do it via a whole harmless agreement, I believe, in case they damage our cul-de-sac and placing the trailer and removing it. And I think they'll be agreeable to that. Just want to let you know, we'll be presenting that to you Monday, I hope.
Okay.
Good. Ladies, could I, could I suggest a five-minute break before we? Okay, we're going to take a quick five-minute break, Judge, and then when we come back, your own.
Do we need to move?
I bet we do.
I'm glad you, because she told me she would tell me she doesn't need me.
We know where to find you. Hey there.
All right, quick, you get started, everyone? Judge, it's your show. We're just, we're just here.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. Commissioner Carl's giving the green light for us to go. Commissioners and county administrators and others that are present. We have three propos, representatives from all three of the state-approved vendors for the electronic poll pads. They are No Ink, E S and S, and Ten X. And I want to thank the representatives all for coming. Some of them travel great distances from out of state to be here with us today. And Commissioner Carl, you get to pick who goes first in order. We we told them it would be by lot. To the presenters, I would share with you that all three Commissioners have hinted to me that brevity is very important. So we've they're aware that we we told you you had thirty minutes to make your presentation. If you could make it shorter, that'd be better. Okay? So Commissioner- Oh, thank you.
Hold your hands up if you'd like to present. Lady was a word back. Oh, okay. You're the father, she's the daughter. You're second, you're third.
She and I are the same.
Okay, you're second, you're third. We're there, you're there, all right. There's no, there's no battery, so I just did.
That's fine.
And I'm promised, I'm not going to bore you guys with a super long PowerPoint presentation, but I think it is getting kind of show for the bar and for whatnot. Okay. Who's playing? I don't know, five minutes left.
I got it.
Cool. So I'm Trish Benshaw. I'm either first sale and then we, we obviously have the poll pad. Um, we, our poll pad has been, let me take this off. Our poll pad has been in twenty-eight states, but I do have twenty-nine up there because we do have statewide voter registration system in the state of New Jersey. Um, we are, I think this is a little outdated this week, a couple of weeks. We are over a hundred jurisdictions. We have over eighty thousand individuals employed. Um, we are the largest electronic poll vendor across the U.S. and also in the state of Alabama. We have about twenty-two hundred poll books just here in the state of Alabama alone. So we work in some of the largest jurisdictions across the country. Um, last year, we were lucky enough to win both Los Angeles and New York City. We are homegrown in St. Louis, Missouri. I always like to point that out as well. All of our development team, our client services staff, our executive team, and everybody's under one roof. Our CEO actually used to be the election director in the city of St. Louis, and so he kind of understands what it's like to be in election official's shoes on Election Day. And this is just a brief overview of the poll pad, I'm saying you, of the poll pad itself. So we are on an Apple platform. We always have been, and I have a feeling we always will be. And the number one reason for that is just because the security. Apple has the most secure platform that's out there. And then down there at the bottom where it says, "We're founded and supported by former election officials." I always like to point this out, too, because I do think that this is the number one reason why we are the largest electronic poll book vendor across the U.S. It's because we hire people who have been in your shoes before because we want them to understand what it is like to be in your shoes. So a lot of the people that you guys will be working with across the state have actually been election directors before. So JJ, who is the regional manager for the state of Alabama, used to be the election director in Lynn County, Iowa. And so he has been a part of the regional process down here in Alabama. So I'm probably not going to get into ePulse today just because we have a limited amount of time, but ePulse is our backend system. This is kind of the brains of our poll pad. This is going to be how the county's going to build their elections. If you have the connectivity piece with the Wi-Fi or the cellular iPads, you'll be able to have a bird's-eye view into everything that's going on on Election Day. You'll be able to know if your poll pads have been charged, if their battery, what their battery percentage is. You can send messages to poll workers. You can update voters in polling places with a click of your mouse just at your computer. So there's a lot of different things that ePulse can do. And then there's a lot of different things that we offer as a company. So we'll come in and do Wi-Fi site surveys if you want us to. We offer onsite support, onsite training. Just because of this year with COVID and everything going on, we're also doing a lot of WebEx trainings that's free of charge. So if that's something that the county decides that they want to do, we've off obviously going to offer that as well. And then last but not least, I always like to throw this up here so you guys can understand what you get within a poll pad kit. The printer that's on the screen is optional. I will be demonstrating without a printer today, but printers are optional if it's something that the county so chooses that they want to have. But everything comes in a green case. You obviously get your iPad and your your charger, your stand, your printer and your printer cord. We always give two styluses because we typically say that one gets feet and it gets up and leaves during Election Day because someone accidentally took it home with them. An ID tray and a screen cleaner. So I'm going to go ahead and plug my poll pad in, and we're just going to walk through a couple voter scenarios. And then I guess I'll open it up for questions if anyone has questions, and I'll make it super short and sweet. Okay, so this is, actually, I'm going to go to the home screen. So this is what the poll pad is going to look like when your poll workers open this up on Election Day. So you can see here, it's going to house your entire countywide records on the poll book. Up there in the top right, you can see where it says countywide records. Here in my demo unit, I only have about three thousand registered voters in my county, but in this specific precinct or this polling location, only three-hundred-and-sixty-six voters. Down where it says Mobile County, that's going to be the name of the jurisdiction. So obviously, here we have Mobile County. Right below that is going to be the name of the election. So here we have poll pad general election. This might be something like November general election or November presidential election. You guys can name it how you want to. Obviously, the date. And then right below that is going to be the polling location. So our polling location here is the Mobile County Government Center Annex. So there's two big things that we always tell our poll workers to look at at the beginning of the morning, and that's the number of check-ins. So obviously, you can see here that our number of check-ins is zero. And down there at the bottom where we talked about the location, that's the other very important thing that we want to make sure, because if this was sent to the wrong location, those voters that are coming to check in, if they're actually not at the right location, they're going to show up in here as the wrong location. But we'll get to that. So I'm just going to, like I said, walk through a couple voter scenarios, and then you guys, if you have any questions afterwards, you just let me know. So the first voter, the first two voters I'm going to do are going to be our perfect voters. So we're going to pretend that George Washington has come in to vote, and he's brought his ID in with him. So I'm simply going to take his ID, and I'm going to set him on the back of my ID tray. And I have two options here to look up voters. I can scan a barcode or I can do manual entry. But since he brought his driver's license in, and the driver's license has a barcode on the back, I'm going to click on scan barcode. And this is going to pull up George Washington's information. Now here, this simply just reads, "Verify the voter's address is correct before proceeding." There's been a couple of instances where people had asked us to put this in here just to verify and make sure that the poll workers are still looking at that ID and verifying that the address on the ID matches what is actually on the poll pad. But once I've verified it, I can click on correct address. This is going to pull up George Washington's information on the voter confirmation page. I'm simply going to click on accept in the top right. This is where you would spin the poll pad around for the voter to sign. So it it's on a swivel. Sorry, it's a little hard to show because it's plugged in, but it's on a swivel stand. George can sign. Click on done signing. Here you have your two poll worker initials, and I'm simply going to click on submit in the top right. So we have processed our first perfect voter. The next voter is going to be Martin Van Buren. He's also going to be a perfect voter, but I want to show you guys what it looks like to look someone up by manual entry. So I'm simply going to take my stylus and click on manual entry. This is very similar to paper rosters because we want to have the last name first and the first name last just to make it easier for your poll workers and an easy transition. We always train our poll workers on the rules of three. So just look up the first three letters of the last and first name. Reason being is just because of spelling errors and things like that. I have a really long and weird last name, so it just kind of helps alleviate spelling errors. So Martin Van Buren, so we're going to do V A N, first name M A R, click on search. Here it searched through our entire countywide records, and it's only pulled up those voters that match that search criteria. So here, Martin Van Buren is the only Martin Van Buren in the county, so I'm going to take my stylus and click on his information. Again, it's asking me to verify his address. I can do so, and now I have the option to process again. There's a couple more things I wanted to point out on these screens. Once I click on accept here, and I try to- Uh, once I click on accept here, um, and I try to spin this around for Martin to sign, I can't move forward until a signature has actually been put on this page. So if you see in the top right where it says done signing, it's shaded light blue right now. Once I start, well, if I try to click on it right now, it's not going to let me go forward. So there's some built-in failsafes within the application, so that you have to do everything that you're supposed to do in order for this voter to check in. So now you can see, once I start signing his name, that it's shaded a darker blue, and now I can simply click on done signing to move forward. Again, same here with this page, with that submit button in the top right. I'm not saying that your poll workers are like the rest of the poll workers across the country, but some people forget to initial every now and again. Um, so that submit button up there is not going to turn that dark blue until both poll workers have initialed. Um, the other two buttons on here that I wanted to point out are assistance required. So if they need assistance, you can capture the assisters' information here. If you wanted to capture their name by text, um, their address, their phone number, and things like that, we have that option as well. Um, here we just have a signature on the screen. Curbside check-in has been another thing that's been super important this year, especially with everything going on with COVID. So that's an option on here as well, this will track all of your curbside voters, if you so choose to have that on here. Um, and you'll get a report of that in the backend system in ePolls, that will let you know how many curbside voters you had check in. But I'm simply going to initial and click on submit. Super simple, um, our next voter is going to be our inactive voter, his name is Brett Harless. We're going to pretend that he's come in and brought his ID as well. So I'm simply going to place it on the ID tray again, and click on scan barcode. So this is what we call our prompts on the PollPad. So essentially what this is, is it's going to be directing your poll workers on how to handle a situation if a voter has a status attached to their name, like an inactive voter or an absentee voter. Um, we like these at NO Ink, especially because it gives the poll worker confidence to know what they're supposed to be doing for this voter. But it also gives you guys the confidence to know that hopefully, everything that you've taught them in training is going to continue to still be right on that screen, so they know exactly what to do every time an inactive voter comes in. And it's almost like having a built-in training process within the application. So this simply reads voter is marked inactive, direct the voter to complete the voter re-identification update form before being processed. And then I have two options here. If the form has been completed, I can check Brett in. Or if I want him to step away and fill that form out and come back, I can simply click on cancel, and go back to the beginning, and we can look up another voter. For my next voter, I'm going to pretend that John Adams has come in, he is our absentee voter. I'm going to place his ID on the back of my scanner and click on scan barcode. This is going to pull up John Adams right here, so you can see he's shaded red, and he's labeled as an absentee voter. I'm going to take my stylus and click on his name. And again, I've got options here as well. This voter has applied for an absentee ballot to vote today at this polling place, he or she must vote by provisional ballot, direct the voter to the provisional ballot officer. So if I was the provisional ballot officer, I would now have the opportunity at this point to click on vote provisional. And now you can see here, John Adams has been flagged as a provisional voter. I'm simply going to click on accept. We can spin this around for John to sign. I'm going to click on done signing. Do my poll worker initials. And click on submit. One thing I want to point out here is technically, we've checked in three voters at this point, but because one of them was provisional, he's not going to count as a check-in. So your check-ins are still at two. Um, a couple more things I want to run through for a wrong-location voter. So again, I'm just going to click on manual entry, we're going to pretend that Gina Way has come in, so W A Y, first name G I N, click on search. Here we can see that Gina is shaded gray, and it says that she is in the wrong location, so I'm simply going to take my stylus and click on her name. What this is going to do is it's going to pull up a map, and it's going to give me driving directions of where Gina actually needs to go for her polling location. Now, if you do not have the connectivity piece, and these aren't connected to the internet, or don't have that cellular data in them, the only thing that's going to show up on this screen is going to be First Baptist Church with the actual address, and no driving directions, because that's all being pulled down from the internet. But if you do have the internet or the connectivity piece on Election Day, you'll have all of this in front of you. Um, there's a couple other different things you can do here with this, if you have the printer, you can simply print out the directions. So if the voter wants to take it with them, it's going to print out exactly what's right here on the screen. You can also text the location, if you have that connectivity piece. Um, so there's a bunch of different things you can do to kind of help voters and direct them in the right location, if they are in the wrong location on Election Day. I'm going to click on start over. I'm going to clear out my search criteria. I want to show you guys what it looks like to do advanced options as well. So we'll pretend that our owner, Scott Line Decker, has come in to vote. We're going to assume his last name is spelled L I N, first name S C O, click on search. So this is what it looks like when you're doing manual entry and there's no voters found. There's a big red X that pops up on the screen, and it simply reads check your search and try again, try searching of the first characters of the voter's first and last name. Well, we've done that already. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to clear out my search criteria. And I'm going to click on advanced options, and this is going to pull a dropdown of all of the different ways that I can look voters up if they're not showing up. I have date of birth, address, license number, voter ID, et cetera. I'm simply going to click on date of birth, because I would assume that's what everyone typically goes to. Scott's birthday is oh-five-two-seven, whoops, nineteen-seventy-six. I'm simply going to click on search. And what this does is it searches again through my entire countywide records, and only pulls up those voters with that birthday. Well, here you can see we just spelled his last name wrong. I told you those spelling errors kind of happen sometimes. Um, a couple other things I want to run over, so if I click on menu in the top right, um, we've got a menu bar here of a bunch of different things that you guys can utilize. Um, I think one of the biggest thing that that is important for poll workers is the training materials. So down there, kind of on the bottom left, in that gray circle with the question mark, if I click on that, um, you have the opportunity to put in here any PDF or any video that you want to. You don't have to have the connectivity piece for this to work. So here, for instance, we have the Mobile County Guide in here. This is a forty-five-page guide, but it's all right there accessible to your poll workers' fingertips. If you wanted to put in a training video in here, you could. Um, if you wanted to put a video in here of the new sneeze guards that you guys are ordering, and how to set them up with the PollPads or the machines and things like that, you can do that as well. Uh, we don't limit you to only putting things in here that are, um, just specifically for the PollPad, you can put any sort of information in here that you want to. Um, I'm going to click on menu again. I also want to go over precinct finder, so over there on the right in that blue circle, if I click on that, um, you might have someone on Election Day that's never voted before, and just sees a vote here sign, and walks in and says, I don't even know where I'm supposed to go, can someone tell me? Well, you can use this as a precinct finder, so we'll pretend that John Smith comes in, and he says, I live at nine-fifty Sandcastle Road. So I'm going to type in nine-fifty. And then I'm going to do Sandcastle. So you can see here, once I start typing in that road, that it's automatically going to populate. Again, that's to help your poll workers and, um, to make sure that they're not having spelling errors and things like that. I can simply click on that and click on search. And again, it's going to pull up the same driving directions in the map, well, if it will pull up, that you guys saw before. And then if you do have that connectivity piece, you can text them, and then if you do have the printer, you'll be able to print out that location. So I'm going to click on menu again. The last thing I want to show on here is summary report. So if I click on that, kind of in the top right in the white circle, this is going to pull up everything that I've done on my PollPad. So we can see here, I have two check-ins, one provisional, I canceled one earlier when I was going through this, so that was on me. Um, I can see, if I wanted to print it out, I could, so if I go to, well, if I had a printer connected to this one, I could print it out. So I could print out all of my check-ins, so if you guys have poll watchers at your locations, you guys have the ability to do that. If I click on my check-ins up here, I can see everyone that I've checked in. If I click on my provisionals, I can see all of those that I've checked in as provisional voters as well. And that's my short and simple demonstration. How much time do I have left?
Twelve minutes and fifteen seconds.
I think you guys are good. Any questions about anything? Yes, ma'am?
So the, um, two poll workers having to authenticate, typically when you come up, there's somebody there with the, with the list, the O B, with the list, and once you pass that person, how, I'm just trying to figure out the mechanics of getting, you're going to have to have two on one for two poll workers to, um, just sign off.
Right, so it's going to be similar to, if you want to answer that too, it's just kind of how you guys are still doing it.
Apparently some other jurisdictions do it that way, but that's not how we do it, we still have to run poll workers.
Yeah.
My understanding is that you're going to be training a trainer, is that correct?
Uh-huh.
Right, on, uh, during elections, do you come back in and train all the poll workers at once, or?
So it depends on how the county wants to do it, we'll do our training how you guys want to set it up. Um, we'll come in and train the poll workers, we'll come in and do poll worker, or, uh, train the trainer, if you guys wanted us to just train your trainers, and then you guys could in turn train. Um, we kind of make the training up to the county, and then we just come in and do whatever they ask us to do.
And do you give support service during the election?
Yeah, so our phone line support is free, so it's included with the prices that, um, are included, and then if there's onsite support, then we charge for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If you guys don't mind, I'm going to pack up, I guess, while the next person's coming down. Okay, thanks.
Sure, I would appreciate it coming in.
I know, right? Do, do you need my HMI cord?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for being brief.
Yeah, you're welcome. I know what it's like to need to get back to work.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much for having us.
Judge, we already have prices on the offer, have we?
We did. It's one of the best of the poll, but I think.
It always doesn't give you a radio special.
I just gave it to you.
Better, I think it's also a bad.
Safe flight back? Safe flight back? No, we drove.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I was wondering that.
It's about seven hours.
Oh, okay.
Oh, nice.
It's out of New Orleans. And if I was flown to New Orleans, I would probably stay with you now.
They got New Orleans closed.
Really?
They do, all the bars are closed.
Well, see, my boat's playing the ocean.
You're in the right place, that one, Sid, you ought to just stay there.
Well, I saw that, but I went to Nashville last weekend to see who my friends have spent way too much money. It's a lot to have to do with them spending more money each.
We appreciate all you can spend here in Mobile.
Yeah, no, you're fine, you're fine. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay. Um, I'm going to go ahead and get started, if that's okay. Yeah. Um, so thanks again for inviting us. Um, my name is, uh, Ravi Kalam, and, uh, my colleague here is Ashley Raja. Uh, we're representing a company called Tenex Software Solutions, T E N E X, Tenex Software Solutions. Uh, we're a company based out of Tampa, Florida. And we, we kind of put a little bit of, uh, basic information here, just to kind of introduce ourselves in terms of who we are and what we do. Uh, I almost always introduce Tenex as a technology company that is exclusively focused on servicing the needs of the elections offices. So what that means for us is that, uh, we've actually ended up developing a set of software solutions for essentially taking care of all the operational needs of an elections office. So we're known for our electronic poll book as well, which is, of course, the focus of, uh, what we'll be talking about today. But in addition, we also have, uh, solutions for publishing your election night reporting, uh, training your election poll workers with keeping track of, uh, uh, whether or not they have taken, uh, any courses that are required of them, and actually managing, uh, their qualifications, along with who's available to work in election. So what we have called election force, under the banner of election force. And, uh, we're also actually, uh, uh, have solutions for managing your inventory, because, uh, chain of custody and managing inventory and things like that are extremely important in this industry. So we have solutions for that. So really, the reason for me talking about all those solutions is to kind of give you, uh, a flavor for the depth of our company, and, uh, the fact that not only are we known for our electronic poll books, uh, which are actually one of the most compact and easiest, uh, solution to use, uh, you know, we are also capable of servicing your other future needs as well, and actually grow with the needs of, uh, uh, your county as well. Um, so, uh, our company, as I mentioned, is, uh, is, uh, based out of Tampa, Florida. Uh, so, uh, almost a short drive away, seven hours. So, um, and, uh, well, uh, all of our workforce is hundred percent US-based, and we take, uh, uh, we take the, not only, uh, do we provide a very competent solution, but we take the, uh, security and, uh, and of course, the US-based workforce, and, uh, and the procedures that go with it very, very seriously. So rest assured, we've put a lot of effort into making sure that our solution is one of the most secure, and is backed by, uh, a team, and a hundred percent developed and maintained by a team that is based here in the US, that is fully vetted, and, uh, be comfortable, uh, with respect to our ability to service your account in a safe and, uh, consistent manner. On our clients, uh, as mentioned before, we're pretty well-known for our ePollbook solution. Uh, I think, uh, we probably, if, uh, just to kind of give you a flavor for it, I would probably, uh, say that our ePollbook solution is probably much more feature-complete and much more compact, and geared towards medium to large, uh, counties. That seems to be, uh, where we shine the best. And, uh, we are, our solution is implemented in seventeen states, uh, including, uh, including, uh, quite a number of, uh, quite a number of well-known, uh, well-known, uh, counties such as Orange County, California, and, uh, and San Diego. And, uh, we're implemented, uh, in the entire state of Kentucky, uh, more than six thousand units, uh, that have, uh, recently been used, uh, in Kentucky. Uh, and also, uh, the Tampa Bay area where we're from, along with, uh, some other, uh, major jurisdictions in, uh, Florida as well. And, uh, and New York has been one of our most recent additions, and we've done extremely well in New York as well, uh, including, uh, the, the Buffalo area. So seventeen states, and, uh, we're also implementing our solution, our voter registration solution actually, in Idaho and, uh, and Columbus, Ohio as well. So we're making, uh, really good progress there as well. Uh, a good partner, um, uh, our solution also happens to be based on, uh, iPad. And, uh, the name of the solution that you, I would like you to remember is Precinct Central. That's, that's the name of our product. And, uh, Apple and AWS, uh, Amazon Web Services have been, uh, we've had a very deep relationship with them, and, uh, we use iPads as well, but actually, Ashley is going to go over how those iPads are actually put together into a solution that actually fits the needs of, uh, uh, poll workers. Uh, but, uh, uh, rest assured, our partnerships, uh, with, uh, Amazon Web Services in terms of providing a very safe, secure place for conducting, uh, elections, along with, uh, Apple's focus, as, as you, as, uh, you're probably quite aware, uh, Apple has put a lot of effort into making sure that their devices are, uh, essentially hack-proof. There is no such thing as a hundred percent certain hack-proof device, but probably Apple is the closest to that. So, uh, uh, I think from this point forward, uh, unless there are any questions about the company, or the expertise, or, uh, why we're here actually making the presentation, I would like to turn this over to, uh, Ashley, and, uh, she's actually going to demonstrate, uh, the presentation to, the, through the, the actual check-in process.
Yeah, so like Ravi mentioned, um, our product is called Precinct Central, just bring it up here on the screen. Okay, one really nice, unique thing about our poll book is the stand that it's put in here. So this is custom designed by Tenex, uh, it's made in Tampa, Florida, where we're from. It's an all-inclusive metal stand that's. It's an all-inclusive metal stand that's already pre-assembled when it arrives to the location. So, the iPad lives in this stand for its entirety. It's stored this way, it's used at the polling location this way, and it's very easy for the poll workers to, uh, set up. No assembly required, nothing they have to put together that could break on them, you know, before they start in the morning. So, um, this, like I said, all-inclusive, all the poll worker would do is, there's a little tab right here they would use to open, and flip the stand around on its back like that. So, this is how the poll worker would use it. It would sit on the table like this. Another really unique feature here is the, what we call flip, so this is called our flip and share stand. When it's time for a voter to sign or view any information, this stand flips towards the voter, so you'll see the screen flips like that. So, you don't have any swiveling that you need to do, no cords being tangled, no issues with that during the election day. Uh, that's one really nice thing about the solution. Pretty similar, I think you'll notice as you see the poll books in general, they all have one main function, which is to check in voters. Uh, so I'll try to go over some of the unique features that are maybe a little different than some of the things you might see. Uh, so to start with, you'll see again, information on the county name. Uh, the, here we have Judge John Davis, uh, Mobile County, Alabama, with the seal. I'm gonna go ahead and just press start and log in. Here we do require the poll worker to log in with their name. Uh, this is, uh, an accountability feature, as well as a security feature, so that we know every transaction that happened on the poll book, who completed it. Uh, we want to know what happened if a voter comes up upset, they're saying that they had some issues, we want to know who processed them. Uh, we also have a password option here. Again, through our system, you'll see we follow a color scheme, so we use red, yellow, green to make it very simple for poll workers to learn and understand how to use the system. Um, like, we've learned since kindergarten, you know, green means go, it's our most direct path. Yellow means slow down, we might have some extra work to do, and red is something stop. This is a unique situation, let's see what we need to do here, might be a little different than our normal scenario. I'm gonna go ahead and press the green button here to scan a driver's license, and you'll see the camera pop up. So, I'm just gonna hold my, uh, ID in the back. For every voter that we look up, we confirm first who they are, so every screen for the, for, the voter looks the same. Here, we're gonna say, does this information match the information above? So, the poll worker can confirm on the ID or with the voter that this information is correct. And then we come to our eligibility screen. The system, again, color-coded every step of the way, so it's really easy to follow. It's also wizard, uh, like a wizard-like workflows, so no matter what the scenario is for this voter, the screen is gonna tell them exactly what to do. Uh, there's no extra buttons to hit, they don't need to select anything to say this is a provisional or an absentee. Um, it's all automatically gonna come up. So, I'm gonna go ahead and hit, get voter signature here, and you'll notice the screen flips upside down, so that's when the worker would tilt this towards the voter, and the voter would sign on the screen and accept. Flip it back toward the worker, I'm going to go ahead and issue ballot. This is an option here, you'll see it's set up for one poll worker to sign, so the poll worker would initial and select done. Uh, there's a couple of options here, so you'll see this actually shows the option, if you want to record whether this voter is voting on a paper ballot, or if they wanted to use the ballot marking device, we can record that. Um, and we also have a backend website called the console, which allows the county office to see a plethora of information on the poll books and run a lot of reports. So, we like to give options here, like this one, to say, did this voter vote on paper or electronically? So, post-election, you guys can kind of run some reports and analyze how people are voting, uh, as far as what type of ballot they're selecting. All right, then we get some more instructions. As we go through this system, everything you see is fully configurable, so any messaging you see, any button text, any words, are all configurable to match the county's language. Uh, but we like to give the voter, or the poll worker as many instructions as possible. So, here you'll see direct voter privacy booth area, instruct them to complete the ballot with the pen available in the privacy booth. Totally configurable, up to you guys what kind of language you want to use there. I'm also gonna select manual search, so you can see what that looks like. Um, you'll see the first screen here is, we actually show a list of acceptable ID types. So, if the, the voter did not provide a driver's license or other scannable ID, we can actually record what kind of ID they did provide to make sure that they're providing something in order to, uh, be eligible to vote today. So, this, again, takes the guesswork out for the poll worker, they can look at the list and see if something they need here is, uh, available. If it's not, then they can use a different option to search for the voter without ID. Um, so I'll just say it's a pistol permit here. And then you can search for the voter, again, using some criteria. Uh, we make it very simple, there's a lot of different options here to search. Uh, but I'm gonna go ahead and just look up, let's do, last name Quill, first name Peter. This, uh, search result screen here looks like we pulled up two voters, one that's in our voting location and one that's not. So, you'll see we show them separately, so if I wanted to look at a different voter, a different location, I can do that. But I'm gonna select the voter here that we're going to process. I'm gonna say his information matches. And then you'll see this voter has a pending ballot, uh, pending mail ballot, so he's not eligible to vote, issue the voter a provisional ballot. Uh, so, again, a lot of instructions on the screen, so the worker knows exactly what to do. We're not assuming that they kept all of their training in their head on election day. Um, it actually tells them exactly what to do. So, we, again, I can just hit process provisional, flip the screen towards the voter, the voter would sign. And all of this is recorded and available for you guys on the console. Here, you'll see we have some additional instructions, because this was a provisional voter. We have some additional steps here, provisional ballot, be sure to complete all required sections of the form. Uh, there are a lot of other voter scenarios, of course, um, like the inactive voter or wrong-location voter, but I want to bring up a couple of things that are unique to the solution. Um, some of those include poll worker payroll. So, this is actually an option that you guys can use for all your workers in the location to clock in and, uh, take time attendance in the location, so that you're able to let them sign their oath, actually keep track of their time. And, um, on the backend, you can make sure that poll workers are actually showing up to locations, and you're not running out of, uh, staff anywhere where people aren't showing up. That's one nice option here. You also have the option to do, um, FaceTime and instant messaging chat. So, you'll see here, we've got a little phone icon where you can do a text or a FaceTime call with the election office if they need assistance, uh, as well as instant messaging, where you can send actually a message to the election office that they can respond to in real time back to the, uh, poll worker. Uh, we also have the option to do things like spoil ballots if you need to, especially in a county that, uh, like Mobile that does paper ballots. A spoil ballot's a nice option. Uh, you can also see we do keep help guides and phone numbers, so you can do PDF documents and, uh, plain text information as well. Um, you can also see we can do voter not found, so if there's a poll, a voter not in the poll book that we need to add, that needs to vote provisional today, we can do that as well. Um, and then check-in logs shows us all the voters that we've checked in today and what kind of check-in they were. So, you'll see we have Captain Marvel and Peter Quill that voted a provisional ballot. Where you can see their signature and their initials there at the bottom. At the end of the day, the worker would log out, so like I mentioned, uh, at the beginning, they logged in with their name, so if they need to leave for lunch, they have the option to log out temporarily and let somebody else log in, uh, with their name. Or I can close the election when I'm done at the end of the day. I'm going to just go ahead and do that really quick. And at the end of this process, one other unique feature I'll just mention is the ballot accounting feature. Um, so this allows the election office, or the, the polling location to account for all the ballots that were issued that day, and enter information on them, on the poll book before they close for the night. So, this allows the election office some help in reconciling at the end of the election, um, how many ballots were issued versus how many voters actually checked in, to make sure we don't have any discrepancies. Um, and then you can keep track of how many provisionals, how many spoiled ballots you had. And at the very end, it will let the poll worker know, you're good to go, you're balancing, or hey, you're off. Um, if they're off, it gives them the option to add some information as to why they think they might be off. Uh, maybe they know a voter fled and they left their ballot on the table, so that's why we're down by one. Uh, but it does give them the option to keep all that information. And again, the county gets all of this data back on their console post-election to review. Any questions about that? Really simple to do, makes it easy for the poll worker to kind of walk through?
Yeah, I think, uh, that is a tremendous amount of functionality, but we made it, you know, we believe we've accomplished, uh, being able to make it human-sized or bite-sized, right? So, everything is, uh, is nice and bright, and, uh, everything focuses the attention of the poll worker, who's actually working under a lot of, let's call it what it is, directs, right, uh, dealing with a lot of public. So, uh, while the poll book is capable of doing a lot of it, the majority of it is context-sensitive and doesn't overwhelm, uh, the, the poll worker with a lot of information. So, everything is nice and bright and cheery, everything does intriguing words at the end of it. So, uh, a lot of, a lot of useful stuff, so. So, uh, we do have a console, uh, that, the Precinct Central console, that, uh, that can essentially keep track of who came to work, who didn't. Uh, which of these touchpads, these devices are active? So, if any of the poll workers are not actually using the devices like they're supposed to, uh, central command can essentially keep track of it right from, uh, from the county. So, a lot of functionality that we're probably not gonna go into in the interest of time. But rest assured, uh, we have an extensive office. So, not only have we made our poll workers life easier, but we actually put a lot of effort into making sure that the offices themselves can first of all, prepare the voter lists accurately, and second of all, during the election process, maintain and manage what's happening out in the field. Any questions, thoughts, concerns? All right, appreciate it, thank you, thanks for all the time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Greg Wood with Election Systems and Software. First of all, I'd like to thank Mobile County for being a, uh, customer of ours already with the DS-200s and the Express Votes, and, uh, and your loyalty and your business, uh, we appreciate that. Uh, company size, I want to talk about that a little bit. Our company has four hundred and fifty full-time employees. Twenty-seven of those actually live and reside and work in Alabama. So, we have it based here, our printing facility in Alabama prints all the ballots and packs all the supplies for all the counties in Alabama, as well as about twenty-two other states, we do print, printing for them as well. Uh, we want a different platform. Our company went with a Microsoft Surface Go tablet. The reason we did that is we wanted to guarantee that we would have patches and security updates for a long period of time. It runs on a two thousand nineteen Windows ten platform, which Microsoft has guaranteed in writing they will support until October of two thousand twenty-eight. That was important to us, to have a platform that was, had longevity. Uh, it indirectly interfaces with your Express Votes and so forth. You can actually print activation cards from this for a voter with disabilities to scan that. When they scan it, it will pull up the correct ballot style for that voter, and they can pre, proceed through the process. Uh, I did want to say, we had a gentleman coming, I'm, I'm grateful that Connor Manis has stepped in. He had a death in his family at last minute, she caught a flight yesterday from, uh, New Jersey to come down. We don't have, not gonna be able to shoot it on the screen, but come down, touch it, play with it afterwards. And with that, I'll turn it over to Connor, and, uh, we appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you everyone for having us here today. Um, so today I'm going to be showing you our Express Poll Electronic Poll Book. I'm gonna move this over a little bit. First, I'm gonna be going over the terminal, followed by the software that is installed on our Microsoft Surface Go tablet, and then we're gonna go through a few voters. So, to start off, on the day of an election, the only setup that's gonna, going to be needed to, to be done is the poll worker opening the case, removing the tablet, and powering on the orange power switch, and then it's good to go. There is no setup needed. We created this with the poll worker in mind, an easier setup process results in less calls to the help desk. And nobody likes dealing with disgruntled poll workers. So, moving on to the side of the terminal, you see that we have two USB ports. These are hardwired USB ports connecting the Surface Go tablet to any external printers that are optional. Um, on the front, you can see we're a little bit unique in the aspect that we have a high-quality infrared barcode scanner as opposed to a camera. This barcode scanner can scan an ID in a fraction of a second compared to a camera that may have lag times, zoom issues, or things of that nature. On the back of the device, you can see that we have a secured barrel key lock. This protects the Microsoft Surface Go tablet inside of the terminal. As for our software, like Greg touched upon, our tablet is built to last. As compared to Apple products, which are supported for up to five years, um, with minimal updates and will need to be replaced, our, uh, our operating system works on Windows LTSC two thousand nineteen, which secures support for up, for till two thousand twenty-eight. Um, another important information, some more important information on security is that our tablets come enabled with BitLocker AES, two hundred and fifty-six bit encryption, TPM, and Secure Boot. We've offered the highest, um, level of encryption with this BitLocker, which is a key feature in security and the protection of our data. So now, I'm sorry, it's gonna be a little bit difficult to see, but I'm gonna go over a voter scenario and just show you how quickly you can search for a voter. So, I have Greg's ID here, I'm gonna place it underneath the scanner, and his information popped up just like this. So, right now, we can see that the polls are still closed, I'm gonna open that for everyone. Um, but if there is an issue, like the poll worker has not opened the polls, there's a provisional ballot or anything like that, the poll will come up in red. If it's green, they're good to go. So, I'm gonna close this here and open our monitor poll. On this screen, we're able to see numerous information. We can see what our polling location is, our device name, the serial number, the opening time for the polls, the closing time. We can see how many paper ballots have been issued, how many Express Vote cards for disabled voters have been issued, how many check-ins, absentees, and registered voters at this polling place. So, on the day of, there, we're gonna select open poll. On the bottom, we can also see the time remaining to vote. Also, a reminder of the registered voter counts, and we can still see how many ballots have been issued, reissued, and checked in. We always suggest double-checking the date and time. We can see our battery percentage on the right-hand corner. Our tablet can run consistently for four hours on battery, um, and that's with constant check-ins, if it's in constant use. If there's a lull or breaks or things like that, um, it could go up to double that time. So, I'm gonna scan Greg in again. And we can see he's active and eligible, the poll worker would then select. And we can see that his precinct number, his party affiliation, a little bit of details, sorry Greg, your birthday is on here. We can see his ballot style and any, um, comments in the comment section. The poll worker can then see that, that, that they need to verify their ID and address. This setup is completely customizable, if you have any prompts for verifying the, um, voter's address or things like that, that is completely customizable to the county, and we can, uh, we can set that up for you. Um, so since he is active and eligible, I'm going to issue a standard ballot. I would then swivel the stand so that the voter can sign. When they're, they can select done signing. We are going to accept the voter's signature, and then now we are prompted to issue them an Express Vote activation card or a paper ballot. For this situation, I'm gonna select paper ballot, issue ballot, and then it is telling us what ballot style the voter should receive, and we are gonna hit complete check-in. We also have a few options on the top right-hand corner. By selecting this, we can see if any updates are available, if you chose to go with the option to go through connect. If there is any updates in regards to a voter, we would be able to pull that right down from the host. Um, we can see the system information again with the device and serial number, and if they are signed in. We also have the peer-to-peer. Peer-to-peer will let us through a TP link, it'll tell us, it'll peer each poll book and the location together. So, we will be able to see not only the check-ins as a whole, but also on the individual poll book itself. I'm gonna search for one more voter.
Let me just enter Jack here. Uh, it is color-coded, green is eligible and active, yellow means they need to fill out an update form or something that's not quite right with registration, and red is they have, uh, already voted absentee or something of that nature. Also, we choose to hardwire directly connect our printers instead of Bluetooth. That's the reason for those USB ports, they're directly tethered, and you get a better connectivity, and you don't have any drop-off with any, if you move things around, you don't lose Bluetooth connectivity on, on your printers.
So, for this last voter, I was also able to manually search. So, you can do this by searching their last name, first name, date of birth, uh, might, like, crew of either of those options by precinct or by county. So, I typed in the last ma, name Smith, Joshua came up, and I can see here that he is inactive and ineligible. I can review his identification, his voter history, and what poll place he should be at. So, since he is active ineligible, um... So since he is active and eligible, I'm not going to issue him a standard ballot and I would call and see what the problem might exactly be.
And also in Alabama, provisional ballot does not take place on the tablet. It is a fully 100% paper-based system, so they would be directed to their, either provisional officer or their chief clerk to go through the provisional process. We don't initial, we don't have officials to initial to issue ballot in Alabama and so forth as well.
But in states like Dallas County, you prefer to have that option. We do make the, we do make that also strictly on the poll book as well with initials or the documentation of issuing a standard ballot. And the great thing about this is that we can see whoever has signed in, whatever ballots have been issued, the time, that can all be pulled from an audit log from the poll book. Or if you choose to go with the connect option, you can see that on that platform as well. So as of right now, does anybody have any questions?
I would like to explain a couple of the things. Any questions, first? Okay. On, when registration ceases, we pull sample data from the state voter registration system, which is an ESNS system, and we send it from our headquarters in Omaha, from our data conversion services to the county with some test names and so forth. They load that data, data test it. The final data poll is done on Thursday evening, five days before the election, which is the c-cene of absentee voting. So absentee voting ends at 5:00 PM, around 6:00 or 6:30. We pull that data, our data conversion team does their trans, transfers this where it's usable to the product. When it comes in, you load it, it will show those that have voted absentee and so forth already in red from that download, and then they can do their preliminary testing and are ready to go to the polls. Post-election, when they come back, pull the data off of those, upload those to, through a secure transfer network. Judge Davis and his staff would control who has access to that secure network with passwords. They would pull that data post-election, send that to our data conversion team. That night, your team goes home, goes to bed during the night, our team converts that data, sends it back. So Secretary Merrill wanted every county to be able to print signature list for, they have the option, print signature list for your Democratic chair, your Republican chair the day after the election. So that data comes back in that fashion to print those reports. Also, it has the option, you, you place that into your state VR system and it gives voter credit history. It pulls that and updates that. I'm going to say in a county about this size, it might be 12 to 20 minutes. All the voter history would be posted accurately to give them voter credit that they had shown up to the polls that day. I started working with this company in Alabama in December of 1995, so this December will be 25 years. We've got a team in Omaha and Birmingham that's been there with this 42 years, 38 years, all this, we've got a lot of experience right here in Alabama that can be beneficial with partnership with the ESNS.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have further remarks here?
I have no further remarks.
Okay. So what's the process? Are you going to go, Ari, just put the...
Commissioners, as I indicated, we have asked my courts administrative team and IT Division to assess the three presentations, and I have other court hours in IT Division reporting right now.
Wendy Rentes.
I have...
What do you have already?
Well, thank you everyone for the presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got a, did you say Congress home? We at Tampa, Birmingham, New Jersey. Cleveland. All right.